For the roll call, I guess when it turns six o'clock, I don't know if we need to do that formally, right? Because we're all here invisible. Is that right?
Um, yeah, we can go thirty more seconds.
Okay, well, we'll have you do it like you normally do. And yeah, as soon as it hits six o'clock, go ahead and yeah, I'll.
Six o'clock on my computer. Board members.
The board members.
Sorry, jump to down there. Board member Blumrick.
Here.
Board member Cho.
Here.
Board member Fry.
Here.
Board member Snyder.
Here.
Board member Waters.
Yep.
Vice President Brigham.
Here.
And President Owen.
Here. Well, welcome, everybody, and welcome to our community members who are watching, teachers and administrators and whatnot. Obviously, we're having this via Google Hangouts or Google Meet. This will be live streamed on our district's Facebook page. It is being livestreamed on our district's page and will be memorialized on the website. We have no virtual presentation, so we can jump right into our standing resolutions. So we will do the standing resolutions as normal, all in one follow swoop. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the minutes of the special meeting of May 5th, the regular meeting of May 7th, and the special meeting of May 13th are approved, also resolved that the April 2020 Student Activity Treasures Report is approved. Also be resolved that the April 2020 Appropriations Status Report is approved. And finally, resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent that the CPSE and CSE meetings dated January 13th through June 2nd, 2020, for the 2019-2020 school year, and recommendations from the meetings dated March 5th or June 5th, 2020, for the upcoming school year are approved. Could we have a motion for those four items?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay, we definitely have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, Margie, did you get those?
Who is the second?
Jesse.
Okay, Jesse, a second. Are any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion has carried. Onward to education items. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the 2021 academic calendar is approved as presented. Could we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Jeff?
Second.
And second Tom, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I am, I am doing this a little differently. If you want to for personnel items, I know that the standing resolutions and whatnot are typical, and we, I think that we can get through those. I don't know that there's going to be anything that's going to warrant a roll call vote, but if we, if you want to do roll call voting, we can do that. What is the pleasure of the board? Or what is, I guess, Margie, what is the protocol for that? Is it an obligation that we do that?
I, I, not that I'm aware of. And if I, if, yeah, and if you, if someone hear it.
Okay, so yeah, if somebody's opposed, obviously, you know, we can, we can track that. Most items, I think, will be unanimous today, so we'll go through it that way. If there's an objection, let me know beforehand. Okay, so that motion for the calendar has been carried. Onward to personnel items. There's quite a list here, so we'll try to tackle them in the most efficient way. The first is to approve, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the following individuals are approved to work over the summer for CPSE, CSE, and IEP work. Ten days for Net Smith, ten days for Teresa Lawson, both school psychologists. Two days for a reading specialist, which would be Teresa Godfrey. Three days for general ed and three days for special ed teachers, three days for general ed preschool teachers to attend CSE and CPSE meetings, seven days for speech and language pathologists. There's various teachers involved with that, and then point five days for Peggy Hannigan of COTA to attend CSE meetings. I guess that's a mouthful, so we'll just have a motion for, to approve that recommendation.
Motion.
Motion Tom?
Second.
Is that second Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion has carried. The next is to approve summer curriculum development work upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following individuals are approved to develop curriculum over the summer at a rate of $30 per hour and will be funded through the EBP grant. Matt Sweeney, up to ninety hours, Dan Malt up to ninety hours, Michelle Parker, up to sixty hours, Adam Ashburn, Ashborn up to thirty hours, Bruce Matthews up to thirty hours, Sue McLaughlin up to thirty hours, and Jessica Monaco up to thirty hours and their related responsibilities.
Can we, can we read what they're for?
What's that? I'm sorry?
Can we read what each?
Yeah, absolutely.
Each one is for, for the public, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Matt Sweeney is to develop the Agricultural Center of Excellence for program and laboratories. Dan Malt to coordinate the district-wide summer 2020 STEAM efforts. And to help develop some professional learning opportunities for staff around hybrid learning for the 2021 school year. And to assist moving towards ed law 2D compliance. Michelle Parker to help out with the high school technology program. Adam Ashborn is to help out with the middle school STEAM program. Bruce Matthews is to help out with the middle school technology program. Susan McLaughlin is going to be helping out with the elementary school STEAM program and outdoor science learning lab, and Jessica Monaco will be helping to develop the elementary school STEAM and outdoor science learning lab as well.
And the EBP grant stands for what again?
Yeah, the Environmental Benefits Plan, that's the million dollar reward that we received back in February. So there are no local dollars. This is all grant funded.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so can we have a motion for the, for that first?
Motion.
Motion Carol?
Second.
Sounds like second Carrie. Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. I think that makes it go a little bit quicker here, guys. Next is to establish a one full-time education, a special education teacher position. Doesn't have a name here. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education establishes a 1.0 effective September, 1.0 FTE, Special Education Teacher Position, effective September 1st, 2020. So I guess we'll just leave, we'll leave it at that and have a motion for that.
Motion.
Motion Carol?
Second.
Second Sarah, is there any discussion?
Chad, would you like me to provide some clarity for that?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna pry for that.
Yep, so we cannot, we, in order for us to fill a position, we have to create a position in the budget. So the budgets are being proposed right now includes a new position for special education, does not exist. So the board's authorizing us to create this new position, and then we'll be in the process of interviewing and locating a teacher over the next month or so.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion then, board members?
Is this, is this position contingent upon the budget passing?
At this point, if the budget pass, well, we cannot exceed the maximum allowed. Whether the budget passes the contingency, if we need to reduce the funding, we'll have to go back and explore all of our budgeted items for next school year, which may or may not, we'll be exploring and taking a look at this position, but we may be looking at other ways. This is something that we've identified as a school district to provide those services, I believe, at the second grade level. We think it's important, but as all the board members and community should know right now, there's uncertain times about the revenue for next year.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion has carried. It looks like we have several tenure appointments. So we'll do all of these at the same time. I will mention those who are going to be tenured. So resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Emily, that Emily Matthews, who has professional certification in student with disabilities, grade seven through 12, is granted tenure effective September 1st, 2020. Also Emily Migrat, who has professional certification in the health education certification area, to be granted a tenure appointment September 1st, 2020. Emily Migrat, again, who has initial certification in the family and consumer sciences certification area, granted tenure September 1st, 2020. Also Michael Barkowski, who has professional certification in the social studies certification area to be effective September 1st, 2020. And finally, Amanda Cast, who has professional certification in the elementary education certification area to receive tenure, also September 1st, 2020. All these upon the recommendation of the superintendent. So there are five tenure appointments. Could we have a motion for all five of those?
Motion.
Get motion Carol, it sounds like maybe a second from Jeff? All right, we'll take, we'll take it as a second Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
May I make a brief comment, Chad?
Yeah, absolutely. I can ask any discussions the next thing. So go ahead, Dr. Stupinski.
So I just, first of all, I had a chance to observe each of these teachers over the course of the year, and then they are all outstanding. The services that they provide to our students pre-COVID, and then the services they continue to provide while we were, had school closure was outstanding. They were highly recommended by their building principals. I wish they were here in public for us to recognize them as, as the board's tradition. Without reservations, I think they're, they make our school district better and stronger.
Great, thank you. I believe you're correct on that as well. Is there any other discussion on these items?
Do you, can you just say like exactly what they teach and what building they're in? Because I don't, I don't know all of them. Do you know that?
Give that to Dr. Stupinski.
Sure. Emily Magret is in our middle school. She teaches the family and consumer sciences and health curriculum. Emily Matthews is at our high school. She's a special educator. She's, works with our ninth through 12th graders through the special ed program. Mike Barkowski is a social studies teacher. He's teaching primarily sophomores, Global Studies II and American Studies, I believe. And then Amanda Cast is at the elementary school where she's supporting our students down that way.
Okay.
I believe she's an ELA literacy type support person.
No, she's a, she's a fourth grade teacher.
No, you're right. I'm mistaken with another observation that I did. Thank you, Carol.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on these five individuals? Or on the, I should say the appointments? I'm sure they're, they're waiting. They might be watching, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. That motion is carried. It's unanimous. Yeah, definitely applause for them. Congratulations, guys, and welcome, welcome aboard officially. You can breathe a little easy, so a little easier anyway. Okay. Onward to our business and finance. Obviously, in the state of flux, we do not need to accept the voting results for the budget or the board member election. That's going to be the 16th, from what I understand, unless that has changed recently. And we'll have to actually reconvene at a special meeting, probably on the 17th or 18th, so we're down to four items. I guess I'll do them one at a time here. So the first is resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the agreement with the WorkFit Medical or with WorkFit Medical to provide comprehensive school health services during the 2021 school year is approved, and the superintendent is also authorized to sign that agreement. Could we have a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion Tom?
Second.
Second Carrie, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next, motion carried. Next, approve the initial Owen Bosse's AS7 agreement. So resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the AS7 agreement with Orleans Niagara Bosse's to provide services during the 2021 school year is approved by the board president, who is authorized to sign it. Can we have a motion first, and then we'll discuss?
Motion.
Motion Tom? Second Carrie. Dr. Stupinski, do you want to talk to that a little bit to just kind of give another, give an understanding of what that agreement is?
Sure. Andy, it's a summary of all of our Bosse services for next year, and it's a formal commitment, I believe, so. But Andy, you want to give the details, please?
Yeah, this is the district's initial commitment to receive services through Orleans Niagara Bosse's for the 2020-2021 school year. Again, this is the initial agreement. It's what we've initially signed up for. Changes are and can be made throughout the year to adjust Bosse services moving forward. So this is just the district's initial agreement with Orleans Niagara Bosse's to provide services for 2020 and 2021.
Okay, thank you. I've signed a lot of things, and I may recall signing this last year. I just kind of, as a clarification, wanted to know, why is it that the board president is signing this instead of the superintendent? Just as a clarifier.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question, Chad, or President Owen, but really, it's, it's, it's because it's really a binding agreement between both boards of education, the district and Orleans Niagara Bosse's board.
Okay. Well, is there any other discussion then on that? Okay, all in favor? Right? Any opposed? That motion has carried. Next, resolved upon the soup, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the agreement with Barker Central School District for the Shared Food Service Director during the 2021 school years approved, and the superintendent is authorized to sign it. Can we have a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion somebody? I didn't catch who it was. Sarah, I think?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Jeff, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has carried.
Chad, just a quick comment on Julie Furch. She's our food service director. She is remarkable. The efficiencies that she brings, the quality of the product she serves our students, and then during this shutdown, her ability to prepare the meals and get them distributed to the families in need has just been nothing short of extraordinary. She's a joy to work around, and if you ever have a chance to meet with her or see her in operation, she is another shining star within the district.
Yes, for sure. Thank you, Dr. Stupinski. Okay, so the last item under business and finance is resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the agreement with the Barker Central School District for a shared wrestling program during the 2021 school year is approved, and the superintendent is authorized to sign it. So first, we have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I would just like to say, as a parent that has two kids that have gone through this program, I think it's been great. I've never seen a single negative at all with the, like, with the inclusion of the Barker kids.
I can, I can, there's one negative, Carrie, one negative. It's, it's, it's that the school districts don't have enough wrestlers to constitute an entire roster individually to have more competition.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
But, but, but otherwise, you're right, absolutely. The, the partnership between Barker and Royhart has worked very well, not just with wrestling, but with football. It is, absolutely. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? I saw a lot of microphones muted, so I gotta prove, I gotta say that I, I'm a good lip reader. So that motion has carried. Let me get organized. There are some board items that need to be discussed. One is to set the date for the reorganization meeting in July. So I guess we could break out our phones and do that. Margie, can you kind of guide us with that, please?
Yeah, Margie, if you can clarify the window of time that we have to hold that meeting, please?
Sure. It has to be held within the first fourteen days of January. I'm sorry, right, July.
The first Thursday after the, or the second Thursday would be the ninth.
Does it have to be a Thursday?
Doesn't have to be.
Is the eighth better for anybody?
I find either or.
Yeah, the eighth would work.
What time are we thinking?
Somebody reckon, six or seven, depending on how we're meeting and how you like to organize. Six o'clock, if it works for everybody, it's a nice start time.
Yep.
Six o'clock?
We'll, we'll be in person by then, you think?
I believe we'll be able to do that. The order right now, the executive order has extended to the end of June for these meetings to be held. My suspicion is that they're opening up, assuming we don't go backwards, as they continue to open up the different phases, we will likely be expected to be an open session.
Okay. Okay, well, let's put it in tentatively then, that it will be at the high school media center. And then if we get, you know, executive orders or changes of some sort, we can always do it virtually as well, but I like the time, so.
And if I could just add something?
Okay.
We usually have other, so we'll have the reorganization, and then we'll have a regular meeting after that. And one of the items is setting the dates, or I'm sorry, during the reorg is setting the dates for for the 2021 school year. So just out of curiosity, is Thursdays working for people?
Personally, I would love a different day than Thursday, but who knows? I'll be on it.
Is that something that needs to be answered right now, Margie? Are you just asking us to reflect?
Yeah, I, if you just want to think about it. And I'll, when I start preparing the packet for it, I'll take a look at the just approved calendar for next year and look at a couple of different scenarios and stuff with breaks and so forth.
Okay.
So just, that's definitely on there.
Yeah, if the board might take a look at it and let us know on June 25th, your preferred date and time, we'd like to be able to present at the annual meeting on that date the schedule for the year. Also, assuming that we're going to want to try to maintain our work sessions, those kinds of things, we'd like to try to get all that on the record if we can. So if you get kind of prepared to talk about that at the retreat on the 25th, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, sounds like a plan. I've got that, I've got that initial meeting for in July, or reorg set, and we'll discuss the rest at our retreat. There's a couple of board items. Congratulations publicly to Carol Blumrick for getting a NISBA 2020 Board Achievement Award. I presented that to you in the Library and Media Center, but it was not in color. And I think you already had one, and I think we have some even on cardstock that Margie has prepared. So if anything, you could have three. And then Sarah, you as well. Sarah got the NISBA 2020 Board Excellence Award. And so we have two board members who have gotten certificates, again, three of them for the same thing. Mine was not so special. It was on flimsy paper in black and white, so I apologize. But there is a cardstock official looking certificates for you, so thank you for your service. And I wanted the community to know that you guys have gotten those awards. Finally, on, under board items, is to confirm our board retreat on June 25th from five to eight, and I do think that is a Thursday. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're doing that now. As far as having a facilitator, I think the intention is for us to kind of get our minds around how to do strategic planning, not to jump right into the strategic planning, but to get the development going under the, under the guided hand of Howard Smith. Is that correct, Dr. Stupinski?
Yeah, what I, what I'd like to propose to the board is that we meet in person at the media center. We'll socially distance. What we'll do is we'll reflect on the goals that we had set for 1920. We'll suggest some district goals for 2021. And then the board will need to be establishing its own board goals for the year, but one of the things I'd like to recommend is that the board consider adopting a personal board goal to accept a strategic plan. And what I've done is Howard Smith has done this work for many, many districts. He's prepared to call in and spend about a half hour outlining what is a strategic planning process. It's not something that the board rolls its sleeves up and does the work. They, they assign a planning team that does the work, and then that planning team brings back proposals to the board that they consider to accept or reject. It involves many, many stakeholders in the community. Typically, that planning team is a group of ten that represent groups, and then the administrators, the teachers, they, they bring work out, they process, they bring it back to the board, and the board then ultimately accepts or rejects the proposals. So the worker bees are out there doing it, and the board's responsibility is to adopt it. And Howard would outline that from start to finish. Whether or not we choose to go with Howard, as someone that might help us through the process, we'll have to put this out, I think, to bid. It might be a sole source. I'm not certain about that with Andy, but he'll, nothing else will outline the process that boards use to do their strategic.
Yeah, it would be nice, one way or another, to have it facilitated, for sure. Have an outside look. Are we all good with that date and time, I hope?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Well, we'll see everybody. And is that, that's going to be held in the media center then?
That's correct. And we'll, we're placing orders, and we'll bring some dinner, because it'll be right on the dinner hour. We'll spend a couple, three hours together. If the board would like us to invite other members of the leadership team, please let me know. We can do that.
My point of that, though, is it's, it, isn't it, does it fall under the executive order? Are we going against the executive order to not meet? What's, because it's in June?
I think we'll be okay as long as we socially distance.
Okay.
Now, if we'd rather do it via this format, we can, we'll be happy to do that as well.
I just want to, I don't want to break the law. That's all. As long as we socially distance, and I don't think we're going to have, we probably will not have more than ten. We might, we might have to that. I don't know. With a facilitator, it's hard, it's hard to say.
Yeah.
So we'll go off of your recommendation.
Okay, let me get back to just confirm that we're able to meet, I think, following what Carol suggested. If we're physically in the same room, socially distanced, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
But I will.
Either way, June, June 25th, one way or another, we'll be meeting from five to eight. That's a long time to be on a computer. I'd prefer to be, to do it in person, myself, socially distanced. Okay, so that's it for board items. The next thing is policy. This was a long read. I, I hope you guys have gone through the second reading of Policy 5676, which is the privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. It, it didn't seem to me that there was anything out of place, which is, you know, it's a lot of, I mean, not that I am someone who's going to see something out of place anyway, but it's just, I think, standard policy for, for privacy and security of our students and our teachers. And because I've read it and it went through thoroughly, I didn't see anything that was weird or that I had any tremendous amount of questions about. So, you know, if, if you guys have read it, and if we want to, you know, wait to adopt it, we can, but if we would like to adopt it now, I, I put a motion out to adopt this policy now. And so if someone can second that motion, we can have a discussion.
Second.
Okay, Carrie seconded. Any discussion on its adoption then? I mean, Margie, it really is just straightforward, right? From your standpoint, you, you kind of got it from, what, Erie One, and it's something that's just routine, correct?
Yes, it's from Erie One. Who, a policy services does have, they use attorneys. Standard, like, most of their policies are.
Okay, it just, it was so long to read. That's the only, the only thing, and I, like I said, I hope everybody read it. I, I did read it, but man, what a read, and it just, I think you just adopted.
It's not a very exciting topic, so it's hard.
And I don't want to put anybody through a third reading or whatever of it, so. Discussion then, guys?
It's, it's, the base. It's, it's, the basics of it, it's centered around cybersecurity for our, our student data.
Absolutely.
E- e- exactly, and it's exactly right. For, for teacher and student uh privacy and security, you're right. So um if there's no more discussion.
Well, I just have a quick question. Is this directly tied to the data position that um we tabled? Does it have anything to do with that?
There, there is an assignment of a data privacy uh uh coordinator as part of it. Um, I think a data privacy officer and a chief, chief privacy officer. Um, we have to designate those to the state, much like we do with our title line coordinators and our DASA coordinators. Someone has to be responsible to make sure that the policy is admitted, administered. Um, what we've done in, in order to help get this thing off the ground, we've um subscribed to a BOSI service to help us guide that process. We've also put Dan Maltz, you just approved Dan, to help us get a lot of the legwork done initially here. And um the data privacy officer will be Jill Hack as part of her titles uh as the Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Technology.
Nonetheless, wh- whatever it's assigned, it is a policy I think that needs to be put into place, correct?
Were required by law. They just extended the policy to be adopted until the fall because of the COVID, but initial deadline was to have it done by July first.
Okay. I, I see no reason why not to approve it now. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Is there any opposed?
Hi.
Okay, nobody opposed. All right, so that motion is carried. We just uh adopted uh that and, and approved it, uh approved it for adoption into policy. Um, which now leads us to our superintendent's report.
Yeah, several things going on um around the district. Uh, first off, I want to thank all the administrators and the teachers and the custodians and everyone for closing out two thousand nineteen twenty. Um, our last day with students uh is quickly approaching. Uh, will be this Friday, which is tomorrow. Our last day with teachers will be on the seventeenth. Uh, grades are coming in. We're cleaning up the, the classrooms, the hallways. Things are uh shut down for this current school year. Um, simultaneously, we're beginning the process for opening uh the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. And as uh you've all been reading in the newspapers, um, we plan on opening our buildings up in September. How they're going to look and how they're going to be different than what it was a, a year ago, I can't tell you for certain. Uh, we're waiting on guidelines from New York State. We are looking at the plans and proposals that are being um submitted by other states that start typically early August. We're watching those. There's working groups going on around the country, uh around New York State right now to even look at what the plan and framework would look like. We're supposed to be getting guidance from the state by the end of this month as to what those plans to reopen will look like. Uh, we have already organized um our administrative retreat in early uh July, uh I believe it's the seventh or eighth. And we're going to spend an entire day looking at the plan, the guidance, and start to um fill in the blanks. We're already soliciting uh in- input from different members of the school community. We've uh reached out to the different uh organizations, the RHTA, the RHAA, uh the s- the service units to try to help us to get their feedback. Uh, the plan is not only how we're going to run academics, but how are we going to make sure that we got a safe working environment for employees? How are we going to be able to trace and track the wellness of our children? Um, in the event that there was a COVID outbreak, we're going to have to be able to report that information and have to have contact tracing in place. Um, it's very, very complex. Uh, some states right now around the country are exploring split days, virtual learning, different models. Um, I'm not suggesting that that's where we're going to be, but there's a lot of work ahead of us. And um we've got the commitment of our administrators and many, many staff across the district to help us get there. Uh, you as a board are going to be brought into this planning process in July, and we may need to have some special work sessions as um some of the models coming forward may have to adapt some of our uh policies. You may have to be adopting uh certain just situations that are unusual uh with staffing and hiring. Um, this is all compounded with an uncertain revenue picture for next school year. Uh, Andy and I are sweating it out right now. We don't know what the final revenue uh projections are going to be, and we really won't have an update until approximately Ju- July fifteenth. So lots going on with the process of opening school for next year. I'm going to pause and ask you any questions on closeout or opening right now.
I have a question. If a staff member or a student, like, tests positive, who actually does the contact tracing in the school building?
The Niagara County Department of Health would take over. We would, we would supply, we would supply the information uh in a confidential format uh to the Department of Health, and then they would be able to solicit records of where's the classrooms, where the rosters, what buses do they drive? Where, where do they have interactions? And they take over the investigation.
Does that same thing have to happen? Um, say, like, one of the kid's parents gets sick. The kid's been home with that parent, obviously, and they come to school. And after they've been at school, they find out that the tu- the, the parent tests positive. Do they then? You know what I mean? Like, do they then contact people that have been in contact with the kid? Like, how far out does it go?
Yeah, I think a lot of variables to that question is, um, there's a certain period of time that the virus is, uh, can be communicated to other people. And so I think depending on when they had it, who was exposed, uh, they test the child, is the child positive or negative? The, the contact tracing will determine how far they go. Uh, if the child is tested and, or an adult is tested and they're found to be negative, uh, with, then we would, may or may not have to alert the other people in the school. So there's a lot of privacy issues that go along with the contact tracing and notification. Um, but that really is the, in the wheelhouse of the Department of Health for Niagara County.
Okay, then I have one more question. So say someone, either a student or a staff member comes to work and they're showing symptoms. Can we, like, are they forced to get tests, like, tested, or, like, can you force that on somebody is what, I guess, what I want to know?
We will not allow them into the building if they're running a fever or showing any signs of having the illness. That goes for any individual coming into the, the, the complex. And we'll be starting those protocols next week for all of our twelve-month employees uh to begin testing the systems out. Uh, there's, everyone's going to have to sign in. They're going to have to attest that they don't have the disease, or if they're carrying the disease and all those kinds of things. There's a whole bunch of legal things that we put together um to protect it. We're going to work the bugs out over the course of the next month. So then when we get the influx of more and more teachers and students in the fall, we should have it figured out. But there are certain regulations that we have to have in place that we're assuming is going to be in place for schools because it's already in place in much of the workplaces. Any other questions? There's a lot of information going to be coming at you, folks, so um keep a, keep aware of the updates. Um, a couple of things for the community to be aware of, uh, construction updates. Uh, at our middle school, uh, the tennis courts have its um binder coat down, and they'll be putting a uh top coat of asphalt on next uh week. We expect to see uh installation of the fences around the tennis courts. Uh, within two weeks, we'll start to see the uh drive and the parking areas coming together with the access road up to the field hockey. Um, our high school, the uh preparation work for the track and field, the jumping pits, the pole vault pit, long jump, triple jump have all been uh prepared. Uh, that work and the installation of the resurfacing will take place in the next couple of weeks. We're waiting on the delivery of our new high school pool, uh, pool filter, um, which should be installed later this month, and we hope to have the pool filled and ready to go by August first. Um, the playground uh work has been initiated, all the sub-surface work, the drainage, the foundations. Uh, that work will continue over the course of the next week, and at the high school, that playground will be installed the third week of August. Uh, maintenance garage, uh, the, the preparation for installing the new roof is nearly completed. We expect by the end of next week that that ma- the roof of that um project, weather permitting, will be installed, and then we'll look at re connecting all of the utilities and so forth in the maintenance garage. Uh, the elementary school, we're beginning the process of mobilizing down there and starting some work on the um, the building. We expect that uh come the first of July, we'll be working on the playground, uh, the uh parking lots. And uh the roof of the media center will be improving the HVA system and repairing all the leaks in that core area. Uh, we're also in the process, very close to submitting our plan for phase two, which is uh for the summer of two thousand twenty-one. We expect to have that in state ed's hands within the next week or so. And then um hoping that we'll have approval in late August, early September, so that we can then prepare our bidding process for the work that'll take place next summer. Any questions on construction? Okay, um, and then finally, I, just a, a huge thank you to the um, the community and the staff for the celebrations that have been taking place. Uh, elementary, and then actually, as we're speaking tonight, the middle school's doing their parade to celebrate the eighth graders. I know that the elementary school, they've done different grade levels uh over the course of the last um several weeks. Uh, at the high school, we've been um having a music celebration took place last night. The athletic awards is coming up. Uh, scholarships and awards presentations will be done in a virtual environment. Uh, for our seniors, last Thursday, a group of us made the rounds through the community and delivered lawn signs to the uh each of the graduates at their homes. They received a gift basket. They got their cap and gowns. Um, uh, celebrations, about about ten or twelve teachers came. We had a school bus, uh, police escort. It was quite a special night, and I don't know, Carrie, you um had talked to some of the seniors. Uh, they had a pretty positive experience from that?
Yeah, every person I talked to was um very excited and very happy with the way it turned out. It was, it was great for all the kids. Being able to see their teachers, actually talk to real people again, and just the level of excitement from everybody on the bus, it was, it was outstanding.
Yeah, so again, that, Mr. Bell and Colleen Albee and Michelle O'Connor uh really organized it, senior class advisors and principal and all the other people that helped out. We did our digital um videotaping on Monday and Tuesday of this week so that each of the seniors will have a keepsake. Uh, it's going to be interesting to see how it comes together, individual shots, individual speeches, and it's all going to be mixed into something that each of the seniors will have as a memory of the, of the day. Um, I'm, I'm pleased to share um some updates on the actual graduation ceremony. Um, as you're aware, the governor announced last week, um, six days after he told us we couldn't do certain things uh that we could assemble up to a hundred and fifty people for outdoor graduation ceremonies. Uh, and that still won't allow us to go back to the traditional ceremony that Roy Hart has. Um, but on the heels of that, what the senior class advisors and students asked me is could they socially distance themselves uh on the front lawn to the, kind of the uh west side of the entrance of the high school? If they were six feet apart, could all of the ninety-eight seniors have a seat and run the ceremony with the speeches uh and the presentations so that they could uh receive their diplomas? And at the end of the ceremony, as a class, turn their tassels? That's something that would be allowed during the presentation, and um I have approved that, and we're in the process of planning that. Well, how does that tie in with the parents? Well, the parents will be in their vehicles, as we had planned and um put up on the website about a week ago. Uh, they'll be allowed to have one car with their family members. They'll be able to watch the ceremony at live stream. And it'll be timed so that when the student comes across the stage to receive their diploma, their parents' vehicle will be in front of the stage. They'll be able to step out, take the pictures, see up close and personal uh that part of the ceremony. They'll get back in their cars, get back in line, and then at the end of the ceremony, uh, the parents will cycle through and take their children home. Um, it's not the perfect ceremony. It's not what uh we have as tradition here, but it is allowable and unique, and I believe the students um really believe it's uh um something that's special for them and the best that we can do at this time. Okay. Are there any?
I just wanted to say I'd like to compliment the seniors themselves for stepping up and kind of taking the lead on the, excuse me, on the graduation deal. Um, obviously, things have been all over the place over the past few months. What are we going to do? And there's been different scenarios and um ceremonies proposed, and I think it was really one that the seniors stepped up, the, the senior class advisors and, and their advisors, of course, to kind of, you know, take the bull by the horn sort of thing and um take charge of their own situation, and we should applaud them for that.
For sure.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, back to you, Mr. Owen.
Um, just, you know, you may want to mention, I, I don't think I missed it, but under the, for your information, you have the April twenty twenty check warrant. That's completely boring. Uh, the twenty twenty treasures report also boring, as is the revenue report. But we do have some excitement with the Buffalo News senior videos. Um, if you guys checked them out. Uh, there were, there were, and sorry, Andy, for calling those other items boring. I know you put some hard work into that. Um, but for our general public, I think they'd rather see videos of our seniors. Uh, and we had some um scholar athletes uh that, that kind of did a, a short video and then um kind of gave some advice to their underclassmen of what they should do, and it was kind of nice to see, and it was Samantha Cho, Mike Huntington, Isabel Coburn, and Abigail Ander. And I just wanted to say thank you to those guys for representing us well, and, you know, for Buffalo News to get them on camera here and, and get their message heard. It's nice that we have some outstanding students like that, so um for what it's worth.
The community should also be aware that there's several media outlets that are going to be celebrating our um seniors, our top students. Um, the state museum is going to be doing a picture, a montage of the graduates. Uh, when I get those dates and when they're going to actually show up on Spectrum and WKBW and the other stations out there, I'll get that out to the board and the community. I don't know exactly when they're going to take out, but they have come and they have interviewed and um talked to our kids and gotten photographs. Again, thank you to Gary and Colleen and John Grismala for pulling this stuff together and getting it out to the media outlets.
Right. Um, just the, the last portion here, um, we have the public forum, and, and before I, I read, um, you know, the, the statement of the public forum. We have had uh some letters come into the district uh to make, you know, public comment, uh, and they have, they have followed the protocols of the forum. Uh, and these individuals are Zoe Haynes, uh, Michelle Ander, John Hallows, Cheryl Gutierrez-Dimitrov, uh Sandy Horner, and some of the senior class um officers. Uh, they've kind of, you know, so to speak, spoken public and via email, and it's been um, you know, sent to Mrs. Masters to uh get to us. Uh, I'm not going to read, obviously, all their emails and stuff. The, the gist of it was centered around graduation. I think we've done a lot with that, and I think we've answered a lot of the questions. Uh, and, and um, you know, typically in a, in a session uh with the public, we hear the concerns, but we just don't have dialogue or respond even, even in a non-virtual setting. So um I hope that all the answers have, uh, that people have been looking for have been clarified, or all the information has been clarified around graduation, but we certainly want to open it up to, to the community to, to continue to correspond with us. So um, that being said, I'll read again what the, the public forum, part of the meeting, but it says, "The Board of Education values comments and input from our district residents. Those who would like to share comments for the record can email the district clerk prior to the meetings uh at mmasters@royhart.org and use the simple uh subject line 'public forum', and then keep in mind that comments ought to be relative to issues, not individual people." So um, that being said, if there's no other uh comments or, or items that need to be covered, um, I have requested an executive session for the purpose of evaluating um or discussing an evaluation of Dr. Stupinski uh for our board members only. I do have that uh on, obviously, Google meets, and it's at seven o'clock, so right after this, we should be able to get right on it. And if not, we can either wait till seven o'clock, or I can resend out the invite. But with that, uh, we'll need a, a I'm sorry, what?
I do, this is Sarah. I do have one question. Um, can we get an update at some point about the grant writers? We were supposed to get a monthly update about things that they have done or money that they've, and I don't know that we've seen anything.
Okay, there, I will um share with you again the reports that we submit to the um DEC, and I've got them scheduled this summer to present their um resource development plan and to give you an update of the work. Uh, the July meeting may be a little busy, but we can get that in there if you'd like. Um, I had tentatively planned them to report to you uh in person on the August board meeting. Um, would you like something prior to that, Sarah?
Yeah, I, I would actually like a monthly update. I thought that's what they agreed to do.
Yeah, and it has been included in the FMC update, but I'll double check to make sure you have it. I'll make sure it's in this weekly update. You'll have access to each of those.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, okay, so if there's no other items, I, I would need a motion to go into executive session, and that motion would double to adjourn this meeting. So can we have a motion to go to, into executive?
Motion.
In a second from somebody?
Second.
Second, okay. This meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you, board members, in executive session. We'll talk to you later.